Welcome, everyone. I now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of January 18th, 2024, to order at 7:30 PM. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for roll call. Nancy Kalal. Norm Peck.
Yep.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Pivo.
Here. Five vote.
Five vote. Ms. Markovitz.
Here.
Ms. Thurlow.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Susko.
Here.
Mrs. Yuhas is not here. Mr. Mulholland.
Here.
Mr. LaRocco. Ms. LaRocco.
Here.
And we have our ex officio. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Publegation, duh. Public delegation is the time when members of the public are invited to speak. Do we have anyone who would like to speak, please?
Oh, right now?
Anybody, please. Somebody, come talk.
I'm coming, I'm coming. Good evening, everyone. I wrote this, so I'm going, I wrote this quite a while ago. So I hope you can have patience with me as I read it. Thank you.
Could you just give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Barbara Booth, Barbara Ann Booth. And I live at 34 Riverview Road in Niantic. So, all right. Thank you very much. With deep sorrow, I wrote this letter to express my concerns with the overdevelopment of our community. Our land, our good earth, has been given to us by the Lord God, the one that loves us. It is our responsibility as humans to provide and protect our land, our air that we breathe, the water for people and animals that the Lord created. Our world is our greatest gift from the Lord's family. We should be responsible on how future land development within our community will enhance our community and not destroy our town's natural beauty. Sound Cove land development should never have been, should never have happened, at least not in the way it was done. No consideration was given to preserve the natural beauty of that hill. Homes, apartments, complexes, et cetera, could have been nestled in between and around the landscape with thoughtfulness to height, to increase the natural beauty of Niantic and Eastlime's community. The hill that was, that hill was a freshwater environment. It provided water from the south side of 95 to the north side of 95. People at one time would stop and fill bottles of fresh, clean water from that hill. Now you have pollution and runoff from that hill that travels down the hill to Costco's. You can stand in the parking lot of Costco's and see the runoff of water and pollution from the hill. Also, there are gas tanks buried in the ground of Costco's. Water surrounds those tanks that are in the ground. This is an environmental disaster waiting to happen. On Roxbury Road, another environmental destruction is happening. Wetlands from underground springs from York Prison flows across Roxbury Road to fill ponds of water with water that travels to the opposite side of Roxbury Road. It is a natural wetland area that you, the zoning committee, I might be wrong about this, but the zoning committee are trying to change to remove the natural flow of water by smashing natural rock and moving dirt so that, so the zoning community can reclassify a wetland to no longer be a wetland area for the purpose of building houses, apartment complexes, or whatever, on it, just as they have done to Cove Sound, Sound Cove Hill, and Costco's. Planning with no consideration to preserve the beauty of our community destroys our community. No amount of cash flow is worth the destruction of our natural beautiful community of Niantic and Eastlime. The zoning community needs to take their time and take their hands out of the pockets of money to do what is right and what is good for Niantic and Eastlime community and our world. So I'm concerned about all the different developments that are being pushed into town. And this I received today, and this is on my road, from Sotheby's, on my road. And it says that the home is going for $425,000. And it says that it is a possibility of having a development being put there. So it is an ideal area, Roxbury Road and Riverview Road, to have all these developments going in because you have 95, south and north, very, the entrances very close. But the amount of traffic that is actually coming into town is actually hurting our town. And the development of way it's being done, I'm not really against development, but I'm against how it's being done, that we're not preserving the natural beauty of the land. We can nestle in homes, apartments, around trees and shrubs and whatnot. We don't have to plant new ones. We already have all of that here. So I'm concerned with the destruction of the land. And on my road, I am concerned about development behind my home. We have open space back there. It would be a wonderful place to have more homes for people to live in. But it also needs to be done in a way that it's not going to damage the land, the environment, pollution, all of it. Well, thank you very much for my time speaking, and thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
We really appreciate that you've come forward, and thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nick Menepace, 38 Hope Street. I do have something that I'll want to put into the record afterwards, but I can just give it to you afterwards. So, hi. I wanted to start off by saying that the conduct of zoning members Nancy Kalal, Norm Peck, Mark Foley, and alternate Mark Peterson this week was undemocratic and frankly embarrassing to the town of Eastlime. Putting Ann Thurlow onto this board after her losing in the November election is an insult to the voters, as is your failure to consider any of the other qualified people who submitted for the open seat. Calling a special meeting for Tuesday, January 16th, because it was two days ago, was a clear political ploy. Political games like this are one of the reasons that Ms. Thurlow was rejected by the voters on November 5th. Just because some of the members of this commission do not like the decision by the voters does not give you the right to undo their decision. On a related note, I wanted to put into record an email I received from Acting Chair Nancy Klal, who in response to an email I messaged her about the Aquifer, I did so as a member of the Eastlime Planning Commission, although I did not speak tonight as such. Ms. Klal told me, "You are welcome to try my patience and risk my wrath, but I will call the cops without any question at the first outburst, and if asked, will press charges. We will look really positive to your future aspirations." Frankly, this was very upsetting to receive. Elected officials should not be attempting to intimidate or bully speakers at their meetings. I believe in the power of open dialogue and discussion at town events. It is crucial for the public to have the opportunity to express their opinions and concerns, even if members of this commission do not like what is said. To conclude, the actions of several committee members have been embarrassing, undemocratic, and clearly partisan. But we are now moving forward. I would suggest that you listen to the town, excuse me, to the people of this town, because Eastlime believes, excuse me, deserves elected officials committed to democratic values. It's all right, I'll just leave this over here with the secretary. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, Ms. McGowan, 33 Spinnaker. First of all, I want to apologize, Mr. Mulholland, to you in your office. And I did get, I did get your, Jessica did help me out with the second FOI request that I got. She made, she clarified it, and I really appreciate it, and I'm sorry for-
You're welcome, we're just staff, we're here to help.
Thank you very much. That was a little displaced anger, and I am sorry.
Thank you.
So I firmly support Mr. Menepace's comments. This was the, this was the ballot. This was the ballot. And this can go in the record, it's a little scratched up. So I'm very disappointed that I took many day, many days and evenings and hours to make sure that our system worked. I bank called, I didn't door knock this time, I bank called. On voting day, I think I made 127 calls. I just said, "Come out and vote." I didn't say anything about anybody who to vote for. This was the slate. And Ms. Ann Thurlow, Mrs. Ann Thurlow, you lost by 41 votes, I think. Is that correct, 41 votes? I'm not exactly sure. I also, at the end of voting, left my home, drove down to the, to the lot, to the library, took the tally sheets that the official vote people, I don't remember, I don't know who they were, the official, official vote people count up and put on a ticker tape. I picked them up with Michelle Maitland, drove them to the Lime Tavern, and waited for the results. At no time were those results changed or anything, and so I really hope, Ms. Thurlow, Mrs. Thurlow, Ann Thurlow, that you would consider 41 votes, a 41 vote loss is looking like 11,780 votes someone's looking for. So if you could sleep tonight, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we're moving on to the election of Chairman of the Commission to fill Ms. Jette Harris's vacated position. Can I have a nomination?
Madam Chair, may I make a nomination?
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to make a nomination for a gentleman which I, who I hope will allow me to complete my statement before deciding whether or not to accept the nomination. And that nomination is for Mr. Peck to be Chair for the remainder of the present term that ends next December. Quite apart from the fact that Mr. Peck has been, has been kind and considerate to myself, treated me with respect, given me advice, most of which I'm sorry I haven't taken, but quite apart from that, I nominate him because he's a very longstanding member of this body since 1989, if I'm not mistaken. He's regarded as a person of real integrity by people all over the community and across the entire political spectrum. There are no questions whatsoever hanging over him as to his position on this commission, which might result in him ever having to vacate or otherwise explain away his position in the chair. At this moment, when many are wondering, rightly or wrongly, about the reliability or integrity or politics of this body, it's important for us to send a reassuring signal to the public that we unanimously support our Chair. I know the gentleman may not wish to serve, but I would respectfully ask that he consider that if there was ever a time for him to accept this role, this is that time, for the good of this body, for the good of our town, which he has served well since 1989. So therefore, I nominate Mr. Peck for the remainder of the present term that ends in December.
I second that. Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I would, I would like to nominate Ann Thurlow.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
May I make a campaign speech?
Absolutely, yes.
I would love to serve as Chairman of this Board, and I appreciate that, Gary. But I have to decline. I have my good reasons to decline. But I hope to be around here for a while. Thank you.
So Mr. Peck has declined the nomination. That leaves the nomination for Ann Thurlow on the floor.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, I was talking on the board.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's four to two. Ann Thurlow is now-
They haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry?
You didn't ask for-
They didn't vote yet, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You should ask for who. Does anybody oppose?
Oh, who is opposed?
Yes, yes, you're right. Good prediction.
Okay, so four to two. Ann Thurlow is now our new official Chair. And with that, I get to give you this.
Can I enter this into the record, Jim?
No.
Thank you. I'll go by the cleaning.
Déjà vu. Okay. Now, next, we don't have any public hearing tonight. Regular meeting, approval of the minutes of January 4th. Also, can we ask for approval of the minutes of January 16th? From two nights ago.
I move to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? One abstention. For, I was actually sat for both meetings and read the minutes, so it's five and one abstention. New business. I don't know of anything pressing this evening. I would suggest we move any business to the next meeting, but if there's something that four people want to vote on to discuss tonight, now's the time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have the floor. So I want to say that it's time to get down to business. I agree with that comment that's been made by several people. But as we do, I hope that we always follow the North Star, which for me is the law, our rules, and the law of the people. Please know that the challenges that I have brought with respect to the appointment procedures these past few weeks have been grounded in serious legal and political concerns. They were not born, and they are not born out of personal feelings about people who I don't really know and who don't really know me. For example, I agree with the legal scholarship, which says that the best way to protect representative democracy is to fill vacancies with people from the same party as the person who vacated the position. Most states that fill legislative vacancies with appointments require just that. Political science tells us that that is the best way to give the voters what they voted for and to preserve the integrity of representative democracy. So with that, what I would like us to do is come together now and get down to work. And to that end, I would truly like to know, take this time we have this evening, we don't have to take a lot of time, we take some time, for each of us to think together what we might consider doing to improve zoning in our community. Are there any particular issues that the members think we should address that might require changes or improvements to our bylaws or our regulations or our procedures? I understand that some of you feel that as a newcomer, I should sit and watch what happens to assimilate or simply show that I'm not an arrogant son of an unwed, unwed mother, but I feel it would be, not be serving those who elected me. I am an expert in zoning and urban planning, and I feel I have an obligation to work to get Eastlime better. I see problems that need correcting, but I'm sure you do too as well. So let's get down to work. I also just can't sit back and watch, because in zoning, we don't really have the luxury of time to spare. At any moment, a huge project application could be submitted for the Tracus Tract, on the landmark project site, or on any number of other large properties that are already owned by developers that will forever, or could forever, change our town. And they must be reviewed, as most of us know, under the rules and procedures that exist when they apply. If our rules and procedures are insufficient with respect to site planning, or stormwater runoff, or water preservation, or tree protection, or urban design, or traffic management, or any of the other considerations that are so important to our community and which we can, I think, improve our procedures and rules around, if our rules and procedures are insufficient in any of those ways, then the project may also turn out to be insufficient as approved and not really in the best interest of our public health, safety, convenience, or general welfare. So I feel it's both unethical and unwise and a waste of important, critical time for me to sit on the sidelines for even a day when I know there's work to be done. I know, of course, I'm not the only one with ideas about what needs doing. You all do too. We all just want to help, so let's get to it. That's my speech. So does anyone here have any ideas?
I think-
I'd like to hear them share about-
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, I have the floor.
Well-
I do have the floor, that's the Roberts Rule.
For, for now.
Normally, I am allowed to speak for up to 10 minutes when I'm recognized, and the Chair has to recognize a person, those are the Roberts Rules. That's what I mean, it's important that we follow the rules, procedures, and the law.
Mr. Pivo, I was going to say, I, I agree with, I'm sorry. I was going to say, I do agree with you, I think it's a great idea to think, but I don't know if we want to do that tonight. I would rather maybe think about it for the next two weeks and come back with ideas, since you just kind of sprung that on us tonight. So if you wouldn't mind, if we could all, I think it's a great idea to think that we can contribute, but maybe we can just think about it for two weeks and then come back next time.
Well, like I say, I really do think time is of the essence. If people have ideas or concerns, I'd like to think about those and read about those over the next two weeks and come back with actual motions to propose, to make changes, to begin the process of change. I, I really do assume that people have issues that they're concerned with, that they've been thinking about this for years and years, or weeks and weeks, and I'd like to hear what they are, if there are any. So thank you for that, but are there, and does anybody else wish to?
I have a thought. I wanted to bring it up with the permission of the Board, a potential text amendment. As you, most of you recall, a recent text amendment for downtown Niantic in the CB Zone, we disallowed new construction of mixed use. What that served was the possibility of preserving the first generation structures in downtown Niantic. And it also, in saving those, preserved a great deal of true affordable housing on the second, third floors of a lot of these buildings that could have been torn down. To that end, I've been thinking about this, and I want to present a possibility of extending this, well, applying this text amendment to the CA Zone. Mixed use is still in pretty good demand, we need housing, and, but we also need to preserve the existing affordable housing on second floors. And Flanders has not totally been ruined yet, pretty close, but there, if you take a good look, there's a fair amount of older buildings from the 1800s in Flanders that would be nice to preserve if we can, without being too harsh. So I'd like your quick opinion on whether we should present this or work on this.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I could address Norm and Gary, I think that's an excellent idea. We've been going around and around about affordable housing, and I'm happy to, to work on a text amendment to, to that. And I'm going to agree with Gary and add that I have the utmost respect for this professional staff that we are, as a town, so lucky to have, including Bill and Jessica. Personally, I would like to see application and public hearing process improved, and I'd like to see us take more time to digest and consider applications, being sure that the decisions that we make as a Board are correct and unimpeachable. To this end, it would be helpful to have materials concerning public hearings available by email to commissioners ahead of our meetings. That was done when I was first on the Board, and I think that was COVID-driven, because we were mostly meeting by Zoom at that point in time. But that gives us as commissioners the opportunity to look over and see and research the regulations. And also, I believe that sometimes we're too quick to approve things, and that maybe during public hearings, we should continue them onto the next meeting. And as a commission, we should keep in mind that the citizens of Eastlime are watching us, and they are demanding transparency. And to that end, in our annual review of the bylaws, we need to include a clearer process of filling vacancies. Contrary to the opinion of some of my fellow commissioners, a voting public do not take kindly to having their votes taken away from them by appointing people to vacancies who are not of the party, of the person who vacated. I've heard from many of our constituents by email and phone call, who have expressed their concern over this practice. I mean, there are plenty of people who are well-qualified in both parties to fill these vacancies. That keeps us above board and ethical in the eyes of the people we serve. And just as a side note, we had three vacancies prior to Ms. Jette Harris's vacancy. None of them required a special meeting to fill them. I look forward to my term and serving with this commission and serving the citizens of Eastlime. I know that we can all work together to improve the workings of this Board. I am all for a fresh look at zoning and moving forward with different ideas.
Is there anybody else tonight? I think there've been a lot of great ideas brought up, and maybe we could kind of think on some things that were brought up, and if, Norm, if you want to put something together that we can talk about next time.
Everybody's in agreement? We want to pursue this?
Yes.
Get it on the track?
It's worth looking at, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I agree with the idea that Norm and Denise have both brought forward. I like the point also that's very important about the historic nature of Old Post Road in Flanders to the west of the, of the school. There's quite a lot of historic stock there, dating back to the 1840s, the original founding of this town. There's probably 30 or 40 buildings in that area that, and also in other parts of our corners that are surprisingly worth recognizing, giving consideration to. But the point about affordable housing is important, too. I'd like us to put on our next agenda a conversation about how Mr. Peck's idea interacts with the idea of preserving and providing affordable housing. And at the same time, I'd like to have an opportunity to talk with each other about not the 830G problem, but the 830L opportunity. Now, this is-
Now, this is a section of the 830, known as the 830G Affordable Housing Appeals provision that would give us the ability to, for four years, no longer be subject to the appeals procedure that, in effect, overrules, overrides the zoning discretion that this commission would have over set-aside affordable housing development projects. These projects, not always, but in several cases, are used kind of as a battering ram by, to force town to ignore a lot of the zoning standards in the rural areas especially that have been put in place in order to protect the natural environment and aesthetic qualities, historic properties, the farmland. But we don't really have to be subject to that because under 830L, if the town has built enough affordable housing, which we have in a variety of projects that already exist, then we are qualified, as we actually are now, to get this for your moratorium. It doesn't mean you don't build affordable housing in places you do want it, in ways that you do want it, but it doesn't allow the town to be subject to the kind of appeal that we're going through right now with Holmes Road, or the kind of dismantling of our policies that was done by the judge in the cases with respect to Landmark and other sorts of things like that. I can elaborate on that at the time, but I'd like to have this opportunity because I think one of the gravest threats to land use and environmental conditions in this community is the fact that anytime, an 830G project could be proposed for hundreds and hundreds of units on the Trachis Tract, or on any other dozen or so large tracts that are owned by, right now, by developers in this community. We can get back control. We've earned it with all of the affordable housing projects we have built. We've earned it, and we can go forward with preserving and building affordable housing stock in a way that makes the best sense for the lower-income households that would occupy those places and for the neighbors in the community that would want to live with them. So I'd like to add that to the agenda for consideration in the next meeting.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Mulholland. I've been gone for a couple of months, but we were going to have Attorney Blaisdale check into some of the affordable housing issues. Is he planning on getting back to us, or maybe he hasn't, I just don't know?
The answer to your question is yes. And yes, he's been working on this for quite some time. They've been doing the data and putting it together. I haven't talked to him recently, given holidays, et cetera. I think he's well along on that, and they're well-versed on that. So I will check in with him tomorrow. He may be in court, but I will check in with him-
Okay.
And send him an email and find out what the status-
Maybe that conversation could all be rolled into one with him?
Yeah, I hope so. Can I just note also that I have actually already put the data set together and filled out the form that would qualify us for this? By the way, this is something that has to be done by the First Selectment alternately. It's an application that's made. So it would only be a recommendation from us that we would support that, but I think that would be helpful to the Board of Selectmen and the First Selectmen if we would plan on that. But I'm quite confident that we have the numbers. This has nothing to do with the 10% standard that's in that statute by which if you hit it, you don't, you know, you're not subject to that. This has to do with building enough units since 1990 and that are, that have covenants on them that are set-aside units, and we have done quite a lot of that slowly and surely, and so we are qualified. I'll bring my numbers and data so that, and I'm happy to share those with the staff if that would be useful.
Does anyone have anything else to bring up for tonight or next time?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Mulholland. We were talking about correcting the CB Zone, what was it? Oh, the architectural review requiring a consultant. That was written in such a way that it was vague, and it was not intended to require a counselor. So we want to address that.
I think you can talk about that and whatever the board chooses to do. There's been some discussion of that recently. What I would suggest is go back and look at the language and bring something forward, and then you can look at it and choose what you want to do.
That's a point of contention, so we've got to wrap that up.
I'll make a note of that.
Let's add that to our list. Thank you.
Can I make one comment on that real briefly? Please do check that, what the state statute says, because I'm rather sure that that provision is directly out of the state statute, and it is mandatory. It's not discretionary. I could be wrong, and we might be able to override the state mandate, but I don't think so. And, but it does present, it would give us a professional level of design review that we don't have the capacity for on the zoning or in the staff, and it wouldn't be very expensive with respect to the cost, because it would just be, from time to time, you'd ask somebody to spend a day and produce a review. But with respect to the cost, I would like us to look at the fact that state law allows, and the Planning Commission has, an item in their fee schedule that we can have in ours that simply says that professional services necessary for the review of an application can be retained by zoning, or in that case, by planning, and that cost passed on to the applicant. So it would be a zero cost to us. We could do that with respect to that particular kind of expertise or others as well. For example, visual resource analysis, when we want to see how a big project might be affecting the view from the Oswegochi Preserve or anywhere else, we're going to need to, or hire a visual resources, computer analyst, analyst of architect who can do that kind of work for us. It's not free, but it's critical that we do that. It should be something that we pass on as a cost through this provision, and we just have to ask the Board of Selectmen to update that ordinance, to update our fees, which, by the way, haven't been updated, I think it looks like, for at least 10 years. And when the Parks Commission last night, as I said, they're increasing their fees by 5% or something like that, I wonder if it wouldn't be time so that we can be able to afford more planning staff support, which I don't guess would be needed.
Yeah, I don't think you'd turn down any extra support. Okay, thank you, everyone, for awesome ideas. In the spirit of trying to keep it short tonight, I just want to say it's nice to be back, and I look forward to working with everyone and doing some great things this year. Russ, again, do you have any comments tonight?
Bill's ahead.
I'll take a pass.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or you're passing?
Yes.
Oh, good, I can have your time.
I'll take that back.
Good evening. I was very happy to listen in on tonight's discussion about ideas, and of course, as you know, I can participate in the meeting as a, because I have the same rights as the rest of you. I can participate during the meeting, and, but I cannot vote, which is good. That lets me off the hook. So of course, the board has been busy with appointments to various boards and commissions, and we still have a few vacancies left, but for the most part, all of our boards and commissions are fully staffed. We'll next, of course, be working on budget requests for the town, and have you turned, you haven't done the budget yet?
I've just done.
You, okay. I think at the next meeting, if they have ideas that have a cost, a cost with that, that you can do an addendum to the budget. If you wish to, because these have not come to the Board of Selectmen yet. Excuse me. That would have to be pretty quick, and that might be something to consider for the next budget cycle rather than this. So you're aware of the recent tragedy in town with the house fire? And that brings to mind zoning's involvement in that our town is rapidly expanding with many intense developments, and we have not kept pace with town services for that. We recently had an emergency in town that required three ambulance calls at the same time. We had to call Montville and wait for them to send an ambulance because one of the ambulances is so old that it was out for repairs. That's definitely unacceptable. We need to increase our emergency services as our population has increased, and we have not kept pace with that. As well as personnel to carry out many of the duties, we are definitely in need of that. So I think that is something that we will be taking into consideration at budget time. Services for our elderly population are, the demand for those services are increasing greatly. Commission on Aging and Senior Department, I think our population is almost now, if I'm correct, 27% to 30% of our population, and we really are not doing our due diligence with that. So again, I think taking into consideration the things that you talked about this evening and trying to limit some of these massive developments and really, yes, they pay taxes, but the services that are required are just not keeping pace. Our Water Department, the older part of our Water Department is over 30 years old. Our original water, those things are, those parts and things are wearing out. So I think these, as I said, this recent tragedy where we did not have adequate services to fight that fire. We have a fire department that has a volunteer fire chief. We have three separate fire departments with a volunteer fire chief, and as well as depending on many volunteers to help fight. We had to call for mutual aid for that because we do not have enough vehicles to carry the water. That part of town does not have water, town water. We had to have water trucks brought in from adjoining towns under mutual aid, but this is something that we should be taking care of. And as I said, I think zoning does play a role in this and thinking about what developments we have, and perhaps, as Mr. Pivo said, there is some, I'm sorry, Pivo.
That's okay.
That we need to take a look at what, not only environmental, but also what additional services are needed, and perhaps there has to be some kind of an additional charge when these developments come in that go towards supporting the extra services that are required. So I think you're going to, on your agenda for the next meeting, of course, Mr. Mulholland will help you, but I think the wording on the agenda for the next meeting should clearly state that there will be an open, informal discussion, and as I said, Mr. Mulholland can assist with the wording of that. Ms. Uhas was sworn in, and she was sworn in today, but short notice, she had a previous engagement which she could not break for tonight, but I'm certain that she will be in regular attendance. She's very enthused, enthusiastic about the position, and I understand, Mr. Pivo, you've given her some help and suggested a couple of things that she might read, and the same for other commission members. I'm sure that you'll be available to help her. And it's nice to have somebody who's a newcomer, but who also has a lifelong history of being in town. Her family roots are here, and she was raised here. And as a matter of fact, I think, Mr. Peck, she was a couple of years behind you in high school, two or three years.
So a youngster.
Yes.
So a youngster.
So, yes, and I'm the older because I remember Mr. Peck as a ninth-grade student.
Ouch.
No, you didn't, I did not have you, but I remember you as a student at the junior high.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade, yes. So, so in light of, also in light of tonight's discussion, it reminded me of the importance of trying to preserve some of our historic sites, and I'm sure Ms. Colwell and Mr. Peck remember the historic tavern that we had at the Four Corners and which was dismantled to make way for McDonald's. This historic tavern was where George Washington and Benjamin Franklin, and I think Lafayette on occasion, also joined them at the tavern, and to have that piece of history lost, rumor has, it was dismantled, rumor has it that parts of that were used to rebuild a historic property in another town, and that is a shame. So-
That was, what, late 60s?
It was shortly after I came to town, so, Norm, wouldn't you say mid-60s? It was shortly after I came to town, late 60s.
That original McDonald's was built in conjunction with the opening of the high school, so 1969 probably.
Mm-hmm, but I think the tavern was, so we have historic properties that are being replaced with things that have no history. And I think it's not only a responsibility of the zoning commission, but planning as well, and also support from the other boards to be more mindful of trying to, somehow can we mark these properties as undevelopable, or if a department, if a developer comes in that they must, they must preserve historic properties that are on their site? Might be another way that we might be able to do this. So I enjoyed tonight's discussion, and I look forward to participating and with this as well. Mr. Peck?
When is the public hearing for the short-term rentals?
I don't know.
January 29th at 7:00.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm-
Sorry to-
No, I wasn't sure.
Where is it?
Here.
Right here?
I thought that they were going to have it at the, at the community center or the high school again, but I guess they decided not.
The video didn't work very well in the high school, so at least here, they know it can be recorded.
Right, and it was difficult to hear in many cases. So thank you very much, and thank you for serving. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Did anyone go to the Planning Commission last time? I'm not sure whose turn it was.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay.
A pretty routine meeting. They, mostly administrative stuff, they approved a four-lot subdivision at 220 Flanders Road, which is all quite routine for single-family one-acre lots, and that was that.
Okay, and I have on here, it says February 13th that Ms. Sisko is going. Is that true, correct? And you still got, thank you. I don't see any correspondence in the folder. I would just like to say I look forward to this year and everything we're going to accomplish. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Could I say something?
Not at this time. We're through public delegation, but come back in two weeks and you can have the floor. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.